I used to do those, things like when I was young, the elementary school activities and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, there were some kids I saw here. One little line, that's it.
But now somewhere six good girls.
Oh yeah, oh yeah, there was one and she had a whole section. Yeah.
Yeah. I'd like to call the bedroom meeting of Tuskegee Valley Board of Education to order. Mr. Phillips, if you could call the roll.
Present.
Present. If we could, let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for the implications.
Our pledge of allegiance is unified by the United States of America and to be republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for your love and your kindness and generosity towards us. God, I just, I want to thank you personally just for allowing me to be a part of this board or this school district as I've reflected recently just on the quality that we have here. And it's all because of your love that flows through this school and we thank you for that, God. I think that as you, that you can direct us tonight in our guidance to do the school business at Tuskegee Valley. We thank you for it, in Jesus's name, amen.
Dr. Bransky, is there any additional questions to be given?
Uh, no, there are not.
Okay. Dr. Bransky, is there any couple of participation for tonight? Okay, moving on. On number four, superintendent's report.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Gooding. We're going to start off tonight. Mr. Wilson Phillips up, the middle of the school principal for the student of the month.
Okay, so unfortunately, two of them could not make it today. Our athlete of the month is TJ Wilson for wrestling, and he is at wrestling. So they're working on getting into the tournaments. So they like to go to other schools and practice and compete against some other students that are out wrestling themselves every single day. So he was unable to make it. And then Garrett Frye is our student of the month for respect, and unfortunately, he is working today. So he was invited. So we'll move on to our fine artist of the month, Macy Sowers. That's what happens when I don't type. Okay, she's a senior. She's the daughter of Chad and Stephanie Sowers. She's a member of the marching and concert bands. And the reason she was selected is she has been selected to play at the OU honor band last year. She's also, for the second time this year, is selected to be on the Ohio State honor band. So that is the main reason that she is our fine artist of the month. Her hobbies include spending time with her friends and family, serving at church, listening to music and collecting houseplants. And one thing I learned about Macy is that she likes to watch, or she had to watch me, Hallmark Christmas shows. So that's something she definitely watches. After graduation, she plans to attend Walsh and major in biology pre-professional in hopes of working in the medical field. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Macy.
All right, the next item under my superintendent's report is the Trojan Pride Award. So the Board of Education gives this out usually about four weeks to outstanding members of our community who has made a difference and goes above and beyond to better the lives of Tuskegee Valley's students. And so tonight, I'm going to invite Mrs. Diana Flickinger up. Mrs. Flickinger is our student family advocate, and she works closely with, who we're recognizing tonight, Ms. Lisa Walker with the Tough Bags Program. So Diana, would you come up and?
Sure, absolutely. Turn up because we're going to stand over here somewhere. I know, but I heard your back or someone's. I know, but the newscaster says.
You're like a hairbrush.
All right, so this is Lisa Walker, and she is the program coordinator for Tough Bags. Tough Bags stands for the Tuscaralis United Feeding Our Future. They provide weekend, there's breakfast items, lunch items, and snack items, nutritional really, for many, many kids in our area, including kids in our school district. So they are currently serving over 1,700 students from six local school districts. And they actually just had a little bit of change in their setup. They are a team up with the New Philly First Church of the Nazarene and the Tuscarus County United Way. Did I miss anyone on that, or do you have? Those are your main sponsors and folks that they team up with. They have a warehouse down like past, like you turn in at Mark's place, they go clear to the end there, where they do all of their packing. And if you've not been, many in this room actually have been there. As we, in the fall, I had many kids from our football team, the Trojans football team. We volunteered on one Saturday morning, and then a little bit later, closer to Thanksgiving, our admin team came and volunteered. And it's really, if you haven't done it, and if you're interested in sharing some time with them, they greatly appreciate it, and it's actually a great, it's a good time. It's neat. So they pack their meals every, about every other Saturday and sometimes on Tuesdays. And I think that's about all that I had. Did you have anything that you wanted to share about Tough Bags? We're just happy to be in Tough Bags. Yeah, and we're happy to have you. So thank you very much.
I just took your picture last week.
I'm like a star.
She's coming on live. Why is it?
It's technology.
See, it goes live and it just took pictures.
And the last one didn't do anything.
Here we go. Why is it doing that? Thank you.
Lisa, don't go anywhere.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Gooding has something to share.
Lisa, every December for the past several years, the board has decided instead of giving gifts to one another, which we had done in the past, as far as Christmas gifts, we have always and recently have picked out organizations or charities that the board felt they wanted to support. And so this year, we would like to support the Tough Bags because of all the wonderful work that you're doing, not only for Tuskegee Valley, but for other schools in the Tuscarus County area. So on behalf of this Board of Directors, or Board of Education, I just want to present this check to you.
Lisa, thank you for everything you do. We really appreciate that. We look forward to seeing you here in a few weeks when members of our admin team and members of our Board of Education.
Yes, we're signed up again. Yeah, thank you guys so much. Thank you, Mr. Gooding.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will now move into. Oh, good.
Actually, I am no longer the Students Achievement Liaison. That is Katie. Katie, do you have any words?
I would share with you our latest monthly update that I have, was just a mention, and as you may or may not know, yoga is just important in my life, and I just think it's very positive. And so what was shared in there is just something that resonated with me, that a lot of teachers, yoga was offered, and thankfully, we've had the opportunity to have yoga offered to a lot of our students and even our staff more recently. But with the yoga that teachers do, it has helped reduce the number of discipline referrals and improve teacher wellbeing. So it's just something that was shared from North Adams Public Schools and their superintendent in Massachusetts. But I think it's very relevant for us, and I just think it's something wonderful that we need to offer, maybe even more so in our district.
Yeah, I have a lot of those. I'm sorry, but there's over 150 legislative bills pending in the House and Senate. I'm not going to go over them all, so, but there's a couple that I really need to go over with you. So first off, the House only has six states that are remaining before July that they will be in session. And the Senate will only have seven dates. So that, what that really means is they're not going to do much work, because they're working on trying to get reelected. But what's really going to happen then in November, they're going to lump all these 100 bills together as much as they can and then push them through as a joint. So we really need to prepare to kind of walk through some of these. And so I'm just picking a little each month so that we can kind of be prepared for that. And I'm going to go over those real quickly. I'm going to hit a couple highlights for you. And I submitted those all to you, so you will be ready. The first one is House Bill 206. And that is making changes in the regards of expulsion of students from public school for actions that endanger the health and the safety of students and employees. And there's only a certain list of criteria, it's like a bomb threat, things like that, that you can do that. But that bill is still pending for that. And then the next one is Senate Bill 89, excuse me, Senate Bill 49, which is called the RED Act, which is Religious Expression Day. And there's, I would say there's at least five or six bills right now between the House and the Senate. They're all trying to find ways to give more excused days to the students so that they don't have to come to school. We as educators know, we want our kids in the seats because we want them learning. They are offering various things. Some people want religious accommodations. The religious accommodations, you would have to say at the beginning of the year, that I want Martin Luther King Day off, or I want this day off, or I want Hanukkah celebration off. And you have three days for those. But then they want, but there's others who want school fair days off. Some people want FFA excuse. Some people, there's just all kinds of excuses. Now, what, but what the problem with this is, is that when you, on the report card, you are graded by unexcused absence. You're graded in how many absences you have, not excused or unexcused, but absences. And then you are dinged on your report card if someone doesn't show up those many days. So I'm going to put this out here for everyone, that my daughter never sees this, but her child is sick, first year in kindergarten, over 10 days. She got a note saying, you know, you're in trouble, so to speak. And I said, just because, he's sick. It is what it is. So with these bills, they are going to also include that if it passes, what they're, what the OSBA is really proponing is that we, they, we have excused and we have unexcused. So we'll have X unexcused days. And you can't, if you go over that, it'll trigger a note on your report card, but not a ding on your report card. So it will be reportable, but it won't affect your star rating, so to speak. And there needs to be a limit of how many days can be excused. So Eric, think of those. How many do you really think we should excuse? Because right now, we're up to 12, 12 days. And you can take it for any reason. So this also gives parents the right to take their kids out for seven days on a vacation. And they can say it's for something, you know. So there's, there's some flaws to it. So keep that one in mind. The other Senate Bill is 162, and that's by Brenner, who would like to make changes regarding academic intervention services at each public school. And there's some questions about really how they're going to refer that. The one that I'd like to also mention, which is 168, this is making changes in regard to the education regulation reform. And it's, again, going to be difficult to enforce.
Senate Bill?
The rest of them are all Senate Bills. Yeah, sorry. Senate Bill 168. Oh, I have two pages of that, so that's good news. I'm done. Okay, with that in mind then, I have three other things. We've talked about Capitol Conference Session, and I did contact OSBA. And they said if we do want to repeat the one that we did before because it was such well important to them, and I'm going to all these places, and people are coming up to me, new warranties that said how helpful that was. There's a lot of new regulations that did come in November. We're going to get some new warranties in this session. So they said if we want to do that, that would be very helpful to them. The other thing is, we haven't talked, have we talked about the eclipse at all? Eric, I don't want to put you on the spot.
Not as a board, but internally, the district staff has.
We, we're, there's a lot of schools closing. We're not, we're not doing that.
We're not in session that day.
Oh, we're not in session that day.
It's not a limited day. We altered the schedule completely.
So you knew about that?
We added the day at the end of the year for staff.
Okay, so we knew that. I had time.
Yeah, we modified that last June.
Okay, so kids are out that day?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Yes. Sally, we're in the board member reports. Do you mind if I should share something? Sure, go right ahead. So as I was, when I had the prayer a little bit ago, and I was praying about the school, I just wanted to kind of share some things around my heart. And I was really considering what is big, what makes Tuskegee Valley so great? Like what is the heartbeat of Tuskegee Valley? And, you know, why do we get superintendents of the year? Why do we get school boards of the year? Why do we have teachers of the year? Why do we have all these different things? And it really came back to one thing, and in my mind. And it was the love that our students, our faculty, our staff, everybody from a janitor to a teacher, they all are here with the love of a kid. And I listened to my kids talk. I listened to other kids talk about teachers and faculty and staff and games. And I'm very, very attuned to listening for those things. And everything I hear is positive about how the teacher went an extra effort, or how an administrator went an extra effort to do something for that particular kid. And I just wanted to publicly recognize all of you, all of the staff, just for what a fantastic job you guys do. And it is noticed by the kids, and that's why we are who we are. Because we're not here for paychecks, we're here for the kids, and that's, I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you for that comment. Okay, we will now move to the new business consent agenda. That's going to be items A1 through 13. Do I have a motion to, oh, 15. I apologize. Boy, I'm having some gas today. One through 15, do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Okay, any move? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, then second. Now we can have some discussion, which I'm sure there will be. Before I have some comments.
I personally would like to congratulate Matt Laxton, who will be our new math teacher for next year. And then also congratulate Mrs. Parks, Park will retire, as well as just thanking everybody for their donations as well.
Well, you covered things. You took donations and you took this. But I'm going to still go ahead, and I do want to thank and recognize everyone on this list who graciously donated funds on behalf of our school. And as Katie said, we sure appreciate each and every one of them. But I'd like to personally thank the TVTA for making such a nice donation to our ski and board club. We all know how dearly this club meant to Mr. Kennett, and how he and this club gave our students an opportunity to learn, to do something they can enjoy the rest of their life. So please indulge me for a moment as I share how this particular club and how Mr. Kennett touched my family personally. Both my daughter Jessica and son Josh rode that bus each Wednesday night up to Cleveland, to Bostia Mills, and Brandy Walker. They learned something there that they both then took to Ohio State, where they both raced for the OSU Ski and Board Club. It actually led to my daughter to decide to move out to Vail, Colorado, to work as a snowboard instructor. When and where she met and eventually married my son-in-law, who is a 20-year-plus employee for Vail Resorts in training and certifying snowboard instructors. This past Christmas break, Josh took his entire family to Vail, and all of our grandkids on both sides in those two families got an opportunity of a lifetime to ski and board Vail together. What I'm trying to say is this, what this shows is the importance of each of our clubs and extracurricular organizations that we have here at Tuskegee Valley to provide life-changing and life-sustaining opportunities for those students that choose to be involved. This is such an important aspect in providing a well-rounded educational experience for each of the Tuskegee Valley students. Remember, we are about all that they are and all that they can become. So I just want to say thank you to each of our clubs, the teams, the coaches, and the staff members that provide those opportunities to our students. And I also want to make a comment about Beth Hart. When our daughter was in her room, and I think at that time it was about sixth grade, so don't hold that against me, I'm not exactly sure on that point, but Mrs. Parks encouraged her students to learn about graphs since it was in math classes, okay? But she encouraged the students to graph the number of books that they read. Mrs. Parks motivated Jessica so much that she read constantly. Mrs. Parks had a special way to recognize students in doing their books. Each book that they read, they would get to put a square or a graph, I forget exactly what it was, on the wall. Well, Jessica took on that challenge from that teacher. She rose to meet that challenge, and I believe her graph squares went up one wall, across the ceiling, and down the other. Why is this important? Mrs. Parks knew how to motivate students. And while they were learning about graphs and math, literacy became her way to do that and essentially motivated them to both read as well as to learn math. It's just terrible that here in the United States, there are still people who can't read or even do simple math. I can vouch for that because hiring many men over the years in my particular business that couldn't even simply fill out a time card and calculate hours properly. So how not having math and reading skills can really hold people back in trying to be successful in their careers. So I'm just so appreciative of Mrs. Parks and all of our teachers because each one of them touched so many young Tuskegee Valley students to learn under their teaching. So Beth has done a tremendous job, and I'm just so thankful for that. Okay. I think that's all of my comments. So is there any other comments for the board? Hearing none, Mr. Phillips, please call the board.
Superior?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Item, we're on the number five or six. I don't know how this one got goofed up. Once again, well, we need to approve an agreement with CONVALL Auctions to facilitate an online auction of surplus furniture, equipment, and salvageable items for the Bolivar School, over in Bolivar, timely scheduled from March 12 through March 26, 2024. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Katie, move. Do we have a second? Okay, Ben's second. Any discussion? Okay, let's proceed to vote.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Oaken?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, now we're going to move to leadership team reports. Mr. Jason Phillips here up first.
I don't have anything else to add.
Okay, let's move to Mrs. Clement.
I just wanted to thank Maria Conval and her team, Peggy Range, Mr. Range, for putting on an amazing spelling pool last week. It was the first one that I participated in as an administrator, not as a parent. And there's a lot of planning, a lot of prep work. It was an excellent night in our new auditorium, so I enjoyed the evening. Thanks to them.
Great. Mr. Street, nothing further to add? All right, Mr. Murphy?
All right, well, I will, I'm glad to tell you that. And you know you've received a written update, but the new elementary school is about sixty-five percent complete and is on schedule, so we're pleased about that. Specifically, a couple updates that I'll share with you. In the new addition, the casework and cabinetry is almost one hundred percent complete with the exception of the administrative office. So it's starting, Mr. Street. That's, that's starting, but it's not quite there yet. Floor prep and tile is being installed in the new addition, and it looks fantastic. It really looks great, and after it's being installed properly, it is being protected. Now, on the renovation side, they're also beginning casework and cabinetry over there. Still a lot of above-ceiling work and, and behind-the-walls work that's happening, adding devices and those kinds of things. The gymnasium has been repainted. It looks fantastic. It looks, it... I, I'm just excited whenever that's all clean and the bleachers are clean and the floors, you know, the floor protection is removed. I think it's going to look like a brand-new gym there for that elementary school. Our next core team meeting is this Thursday, February fifteenth. In terms of the abatement and demolition aspect of things, we are on schedule. So March, this coming March, we will be holding an online auction. The preview date has not been set, but our goal is to have like an open house or a preview afternoon or evening, maybe both, where people can come through. And even if it's for one more walkthrough of the building, they can do that. But more importantly, if they're interested in bidding on some things, they can see it in person, take measurements, and that kind of thing. But that will take place in March, followed by April, May, and June, going into the abatement and demolition process for Bolivar. Random drug testing continues. We just wrapped up another session of that this past week, week and a half ago. And we will more than likely have at least one more unannounced random drug testing for staff and students participating in extracurriculars in grades seven through twelve. Also, in terms of safety, we will have one more round of unannounced security tests at each of our buildings, and that's in conjunction with the Ohio School Safety Center. So we, we learned a lot during the first round. The debriefing, I think, was very helpful. And so we just want to continue that awareness and level of alertness to, to know how to address unwanted folks to our buildings. So that concludes my report, unless anybody has questions.
Anybody have questions, Mr. President?
Okay, Mr. Cunnel obviously isn't here, but we certainly want to wish him, on behalf of the board, a speedy and thorough healing of the bones and look forward to his return. And I want to thank all our staff members who have needed to step up to cover some of his responsibilities. So thank you for that. All right, no public participation?
I'm sorry, I forgot.
You forgot? Okay, go ahead, Sally.
I forgot. There's three dates I need to give you as the OSBA president, and I forgot. So on April 23rd, state legislative conference, where we, you know, we go and listen to the speakers of the House and the representatives talk, and then we go visit with our legislators. That was very fruitful last year, so I encourage as many of us to go as possible. And unfortunately, I will be leading that, so I really would like you guys there for my personal support. And then May 3rd and 4th is the Board Leadership Institute, which we have found highly effective as a team. Only boards go, and so we just can focus on team leadership and growth, and also helping others improve, and just hearing different stories and just getting some networking going. And then finally, the Northeast Regional Conference, where I'll be speaking at, March 21st or the 25th, you have a choice. But I'd like to have you there if you can, because I'm going to need someone in my corner. And then one official as the legislative that I did forget is elections primaries are coming around. I just want to remind you that the, the rules that govern the levees also govern the elections. So what that means is Derek and Mark cannot publicly endorse anybody because they are 24/7. You can publicly endorse somebody if you want to and put a sign out in your yard. But if your Facebook or your Twitter or any of those things is a, that you publicly participate in and give school board information on, you should, you should refrain from that because it's a gray area. So just to protect yourself that way. But please, by all means, get out there and vote, and you can share how you feel, but we can't do it at a board meeting. Okay?
Okay, well, thank you, Sally, for those dates. And of course, as far as announcements beyond that, the next regular Board of Education meeting is going to be held March 11 at 6:00 PM right here in the Elementary Center. If there's no other business to be had, let's have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Katie, move. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Amy's second?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, Derek.